We currently have three board members in attendance. Can I just make sure that you can hear me? Malcolm McNabb.
So I can hear you.
Tom Dixon.
Here.
Okay, great. And we, I don't believe there's any changes to the agenda, except that we may take Town and Queequeg's out of order. And let's see. Are there?
No public comments, so just Culture and Tourism review of their special events permit.
Yep, so we'll start with, there's no announcements, we'll start with number one, Culture and Tourism.
Hey, good morning, thanks for having me. I come with, I guess, an end of summer update from Culture and Tourism. To date, we've received two hundred and seventy-three special event permit applications. I'm happy to say that only eight of them are still pending, are still pending, so we've gotten through a lot. Applications are winding down as the summer comes to an end and as our season also winds down. There were a hundred and seventy applications that we processed this summer. And for the rest of the year, there are comparatively only seventy-two, so it was a pretty busy summer. And just to give a little example, there were sixty-six applications in August, and for the month of September, we only have eleven. So it was a very, very busy summer. Going forward, I'd say you'll just see a return of some of our local favorites, such as this weekend's Island Fair. But for now, things have been pretty good and just some of the same trends we've been seeing, and we've been getting into the roof of permitting.
I'm sorry, I see Brooke just joined.
Amy and Brooke just logged.
If I may, just say thank you to, Dina just started this year, this is her first year, and she went in, you know, headfirst and did a great job, so it was a huge relief for us to have that assistance as well, as you can see, it's a lot, so just to thank her for, for that, it was a stellar first year.
Thank you, Amy.
Anything else on that item? Oh, Matt Fee just logged in as well, so we have a full board now.
Yeah, I've, I've been here, I was just not on a panel, I was like in some other world.
So next up, we have the license and compliance report.
So that's, we're just gonna go straight into our compliance hearings.
Okay.
Okay. So if we may start with, as we mentioned, we'll start with Town and Queequeg's, if that's okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. So have a couple hearings today. From over the summer, we're gonna start with Queequeg's LLC, Queequeg's in Town, Six Oak Street and Four East Chestnut Street. As we mentioned in the summary, we noticed Town specifically to appear before the Select Board to review a series of noise complaints over a dozen on licensed premises this summer mostly. And also had asked for Ventuno to attend the hearing as well, because of the two licenses being right next to each other. It may impact his license as well, Taylor's license as well, so we just asked them to attend too, in case anything comes up that they'd like to speak towards. As I mentioned, the reason first of all that we brought it to your attention, we do have a note on the license based on past hearings, that if we did receive noise complaints, it would be brought back to discuss. So that was the initial thinking here. Some goals of this hearing, as I outlined for you, is to review the noise complaints that we've received. Attached was the list of them and the call summaries that we officially received in the police department, and I'll go over that as well. It was in and around the area of Queequeg's in Town, they were named mostly in that, but again, sometimes it's a combination, which is why we let other folks in the area know as well. What we want to discuss here is what we've identified over the years, and especially now, is an uneven application of conditions for entertainment licenses in the downtown core district, specifically as it relates to outdoor music and in relation to our bylaw. The immediate consequences here to discuss, as we would in any compliance hearing, is whether Queequeg's in Town specifically and possibly Ventuno are found to be in violation of the bylaw. And then mostly really to discuss off-season efforts to provide more consistency to all the entertainment conditions. And provide clear measurement tools to assist not only establishments with staying, staying within the approved noise levels, but also to officers and those of us responding to complaints here as well. So as we attached here, I'll just go over quickly the call summary that we received, this is specifically in 2025. And you'll see the location of the calls were noticed. Mostly the Four East Chestnut area. We don't have specific police reports in these, but we do have call notes to say what was the officer thought was happening, if they turned down the music, if they thought there was a violation. What I would say here, a couple of things, in the area where we have call notes that says no violation, that is, sometimes the officer will look at that and look at the permit, the liquor license, or excuse me, the entertainment license that has till 1:00 AM and determine, well, they have a permit for that. Others came in and said, well, this is a noise bylaw violation, you know, turn it down. So that kind of, for me, states where we have somewhat of an issue is, how are we determining what is a violation and what is not? You know, you'll see here, it's all different things, most of the time, they were told to turn it down. Sometimes maybe it was next door that they sound the music on, by the time they got there, the music was off, there's all varying levels here, so it just is whatever situation the officer is walking in on. And again, not all complaints come through this way, but this is just a list of what officially came up. And as you can see, just the sheer number made it that we had to bring this in. So I'll kind of pull back on that. Let me just real quick go through. Again, it's just all over the place as far as that, we can discuss for years and years as to what is quiet background music that the license sets forward, there's different levels. So what we're trying to do here is, one, really talk with the board here, and certainly hear from the establishments about, these are old licenses that weren't specifically back in the day, maybe specific about outdoor times. As you all know, that have been here for a few years, we're very specific on outdoor times now. When we went through the Brotherhood change of ownership, the neighbors spoke up on that, and that it took them over a year before we finally allowed for some music outdoors until ten. Everywhere around downtown is specific to either no outdoor music, or done at ten, or the whale because of a neighbor is nine thirty. It's very difficult to explain to officers what they're looking for and what they're measuring. So, one, I think as we move forward, we need to do a better job as to indicating what that measurement is and what's reasonable, but also to be consistent for everyone downtown. Again, if we are saying, yeah, their license is fine, it's till 1:00 AM, we certainly are not saying people need to be off the patio, but we need to talk about noise and what is consistent and what we would like to see downtown. If it's later than 10:00 PM, it should be across the board. If it's eleven or whatever, and you know, if we write an exception to the bylaw or a permit for the summer months, we can discuss that as we move forward. So as I mentioned here, the immediate consequence is determining if this is an excessive number, if we do seem to think that the times, again, of these complaints and the noise is after the bylaw and would be considered a bylaw violation. And then direction for this off-season to make sure that we can provide a more consistent level of conditions when you're approving licenses and a consistent level of measurement. For those of us and police officers coming and responding to complaints. So I will, I think, leave it there. One, one other thing. I'll go off on the AIS that I included, the background, and why I included some things for you. I included, you know, former hearings that we've had with the Town Queequeg's area. And again, not that they're going off the reservation and, and being violation, but just showing where we're having issues with consistency and how do we apply the bylaw and other things at this location. As you saw in 2012, I included a letter from Chief Pittman that pretty much outlined the struggles we're having now. Again, in 2017 was more of a hearing on speakers that were being played outside in February when no one was outdoors, so that was the last hearing, and so we dealt with that as far as having speakers on when no one was, was dining. And mostly that was just to show you kind of the consistency and what we're trying to get at here. Since that hearing in 2017, there's been a total of forty-seven noise-related calls for service in and around the Queequeg's Town and Ventuno location. So, and again, not all of those come through calls for service, but those are official calls into our non-emergency line. So I will leave it there and ask for questions or feedback from the licensees.
Okay, Matt had his hand up.
Yeah, no, so I guess I have a couple of things. What, for, when we get to the discussion, one of the issues we had prior was that we would, the police would ask for it to turn down, it would be, and then it would be turned back up, so I'd like to know if they're, if it's being followed now. That's number one, we, they can, they can talk about that when we get there. But I think there are two, when places are, there isn't one standard downtown. You know, there's some places that it's fine for it to be a little louder and a little later, you know, sort of, that it's not impacting people, but when places are right up a budding neighborhoods, we've always made a point, you know, and, and we've been made a point of then they have to be quiet if the next door neighborhood, and if we hear from them, then we're gonna have to do something, that's always been the back and forth. And so I, you know, sort of, I get worried a little bit of, of, of the idea of, well, gee whiz, we can, you know, give us one standard, just tell us what you want to do, I'd like to know what direction is given to the police now. And, you know, and then what the recommendations are to improve it, like what is it, what do we need to improve? This isn't for us, we need staff to fill us in and help us with it, work together, not, hey, guys, what do you want to do? So, there you go, thanks.
Taylor?
Uh, just real quick, and I, I know Mr. Murberg's probably very busy and has to step in there, but just looking at, I mean, we, we keep kind of throwing the Ventuno name adjacent to this, and everything I've looked at thus far on that document, and then as well as just some personal looking back on Ventuno violations. You know, I, we haven't had anything officially since 2022, it looks like. Over the course of ten years, going back to eighteen fifteen, we've had thirteen in total. Four of which said we were within license limits, we turned it down anyways. Three of which were ambiguous of the, of the establishment. But, but I think to kind of piggyback onto Mr. Fee's, Matt's statement there, I mean, we mentioned the Brotherhood as, as a new license, they're abutting six different hotels right now, I think, right? I have another restaurant down the road, V Mire, that I would never ask for music to be playing till twelve-thirty at night outside, because we're right up underneath the hotel. I think obviously the downtown is a very intricate, unique landscape, and I think standardizing noise levels and measurements makes sense, but I think standardizing licenses and times does not.
Thank you.
Is it, am I able to speak now? It's Attorney Jim Murberg, someone put an ER on the end of my name.
Go ahead, Jim.
Sorry. Thank you, good morning, good morning, members of the Select Board. As, as a preliminary matter, let me say that, that having talked at length with my client, the owner, with his general manager and the license holder, we are interested in cooperating. And I've always been interested in cooperating. If you look, for example, at the call, service calls, you'll see some of them are reported that no service is required. Others say that the employees of Town or Queequeg's are compliant. We have certainly instructed all of the employees, if there's any question about the sound, to make sure it complies and turn it down. With regard to trying to measure, for example, the sound, and I think I spoke to Amy about this before, we actually have bought some equipment, it's called tech decimeters, which actually can detect the deci- -bulbs from right on the location or a hundred feet away in compliance with the bylaw. So we're interested in complying. I don't have any problem fundamentally with trying to, to get some better and more clear guidelines. On the question of whether there should be one uniform decibel requirement, that's fine. But in terms of how long the licenses should operate, I think that is a case-by-case basis. I don't have any problem with the idea of, of getting some guidelines in place for everyone, however, the time for the various establishments should be open, in this case for my client, where they're really not abutting anyone except a single apartment, which I can just tell the board sort of parenthetically, we expect next year to be the tenant in that apartment, which may obviate the need for those series of complaints. So what, what I'm gonna suggest respectfully is this. There may be some process to try to codify what the rules are. Whether it can be applied individually to Town and Queequeg's based on their location, I'm not sure that a restriction in the current time makes sense, they are a business that stays open year-round. They have done virtually everything they can to make sure that the noise is not offensive to anyone. For example, their speakers face towards the building, not towards the street, of course. Number two, they have stopped using any music that has a loud bass with it, because that does resonate apparently against the buildings. And when I spoke with Ms. Baxter, she told me that, that one of the things that may be possible is equipment that actually regulates and modulates the amount of sound coming out of a sound system. If there is such a system, my clients are prepared to purchase it, implement it, and use that system to ensure that there's no noise violations under the bylaw. And I, I don't know if Amy can give us any more information about that, but it's my understanding that there is some kind of equipment that can actually be used to regulate the sound systems, so they cannot violate the zone, the, excuse me, the noise bylaw. So while I think all of this is important, for the remainder of this year, I don't think there should be any change over the course of time between now and when the new license would be issued. True at the end of, or the beginning of January of next year, maybe there should be some codification of the rules. But again, when the rules are applied, I think at least as to Queequeg's, it's open year-round, obviously, not outside year-round. During the season, when they're trying to make money so they can last and open year-round, they should be able to continue with the one o'clock closing time. With the understanding that the zoning, actually, the Town bylaw is accused concerning noise violations should be complied with, but we're prepared to do that, we have the equipment to test it, and we're willing to install as an additional safeguard the equipment that regulates and controls and locks out any noise above the agreed-upon level. So sometimes it makes sense to fight with the Select Board, this is not that occasion, we're trying to work with you and with Amy, who's been very patient about this. So, you know, talk about what happened in 2017 or 2012 is backdrop for this, but actually, when you look at this year's series of calls, mostly they're calls that are complied with immediately, and I'm not sure there's any actual evidence that there's a zoning, I keep saying zoning, noise violation under the bylaw. And I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of Queequeg or Town, if you have any.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions? Amy, do you have a response to that?
Yes, so to back up to Matt's comments, we're not asking for random, for you to do select a time at all, I think the immediate discussion was, again, is this a bylaw violation, does bylaw, you know, apply to these licenses? Do we want to make exception based on location, if that's the, the route the board wants to go, great, fine, I, you know, that's fine, if this, this one place, because they don't have as many neighbors, I think the inns obviously need to be considered, and a lot of times the inns or some other folks will come direct to us about things. You know, depending on the guest, so. You know what, Mr. Murburger mentioned, yes, we talked about certain locations, I know, based on the neighborhood, based on the property owners, have a lock on the sound system that they can only go up to a certain level. Masogi, obviously, is coming next, is had some noise issues, worked out with the landlord, the maximum level that worked and didn't disturb the residents, so that's good, we like it when folks work together like that, that tends to be what works best. No one here is asking for anyone to shut down at ten or eleven or such, but it, it is, you know, I guess it's just, you know, we brought this forward because the excessive number, it wasn't just one person in that apartment. We don't tend to release the reporting person's name, I did send this information to them, should they want to make a comment. Some were from an inn, some were from another location, so you know, it's just a question of, do we have a consistent bylaw as far as these outdoor music is concerned? Are you willing to go to a, well, it's not near a lot of neighbors, so it's okay, situation? Because you can hear the music from, from, you know, far away, a couple blocks away sometimes, in the summer, obviously only, so if that's okay, great. I think I just couldn't continue to ignore it and not bring it forward as that was indicated on its license. So we're just looking to determine how the bylaw applies. And if we want to codify some of this and, and, and put some sort of conditions on it, so it's not all over the place as it is now. Go ahead, yep.
Could, could I just interject? What if we were to try to do all of the things that I've outlined, including installing the protective device that keeps the volume down? Make sure that we have a protocol about no bass music, no loud bass music.
Yep, and I, I think if I may.
And all the other things between now and the end of this year, and then work on the question of bylaws, sure.
Is part of the problem, Brooke?
Brooke? I like, I like the idea of a technological solution to this. Because then it'll, if there is a way to govern the maximum volume by location, then we can have, you know, something that's verifiable when a complaint goes in. I'm a little concerned about maintaining like sort of different noise levels in different locations, I just don't think it's necessary. If there's a, if there's a reasonable volume for outdoor locations, that it should be consistent across the board. And I'm keeping in mind sort of the, the enforcement side of this, and the, and being able to reasonably determine whether a, a situation is within the permitted use or the permanent.
We're agreeable to it.
Excuse me, Mr. Murberg, can I finish my thought, please?
My, my apologies.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I would lean that way, and I, I would be interested in hearing from, from Taylor as another restaurant owner, what they, what, what they would think about sort of, I just did a quick Google search, and there's a device that you can put in your sound system that runs before the amplifier that would actually set a maximum level, and I'm, I'm assuming it would set maximum bass, maximum treble, maximum. And so that we could get more technological in our permitting and more specific, and then it would be verifiable, right, if there were a complaint. And I think the closer we get to consistency on volume level across the whole downtown area, the better. So those are my comments, Donald Tessa, back to you.
Thank you, Jim, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say to Ms. Muir that I agree with her analysis, that it should be uniform, there's no question about that, the, the way to regulate, I think technological advances make it much easier to do that. And it can be uniform, the only issue I have is, is as to each location, what the hours should be, may have to be individualized. Not that, not, not what the rules are, but that how the rules apply to a particular license, a particular time. But with regard to the technical suggestion of Ms. Muir, or making the uniform, you making uniform, whatever the, the sound level should be, that's not a problem, I agree, that's a great idea for all the locations, I only speak for Queequeg and Town, I think that's a great idea, the only question is, is hours, which I think has to be individualized. Bylaw should be applied to everybody evenly, I agree with that, and a technological solution.
Thank you, Matt?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm unclear, what is the recommendation from staff? Because I, I'm, I'm just a little confused, it sounds like you're, like that Amy is somewhat upset that we may waive the noise bylaw, if you want to waive it, you can waive it, and I'm asking, what are we being, what are we being recommended to do now? And then we can decide whether to waive it or not, I, I, that's like, what, what is the recommendation, what, what should, what are you saying we should be doing? I mean, I, I know we should be looking at it in this winter and making it consistent, but I'd like to know, what is the recommendation moving forward now?
Amy, can you answer that?
Yep. I mean, the recommendation right now is that it's consistent, you know, as a noise bylaw, as in the noise bylaw, plainly audible past sixty feet, or is it sixty, I'm sorry, I'm getting that distance wrong, but the, you know, applying to that, these two licenses, and as we renew these licenses, that it's specific to outdoor music right now, because when they were issued, I don't believe that was a consideration, or it just says quiet background music, and they operate till 1:00 AM. By the way, when we talked about consistency should be different at different locations, Ventuno's twelve-thirty, Town's one. You know, so it, it's, you know, all over the place. So that's why it should be at ten o'clock, if that's our noise bylaw, that volume and bass comes down. And it's, a lot of these calls happen after that, and I went out myself late, and it was plainly audible well past that distance, so it is applying the bylaw to this, not that they should close it down. Unamplified human voice is not a violation of that bylaw, so if people are loud, people are loud. But it is the volume, and it's being consistent with that, and then as we move forward to renew these licenses, that we bring forth those conditions to you, and that these two licenses maybe be more specific about their outdoor. And again, at that time, we wouldn't do that right now, at that time, the board wants to be different with certain timing with them, great. I, I, I don't have a personal stake in this, if you want to have everyone till 1:00 AM, great, that's fine, but our consistency is what we're saying here. That the bylaw should apply, that distance should apply, and the noise level should apply, it shouldn't be plainly audible past certain distance, and obviously apartment right above a, a bar is gonna be hard, they're basically on the property. But for others and inns and such should have that distance, and it shouldn't be plainly audible at a late time, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank, thank you, I'm not sure whose hand up was up first, I think it was Malcolm's.
Thank you, I, I want to go back to sort of where, where Matt was going. This is, we're certainly not going to come to any conclusion today. I, I would like to see staff present us with some type of proposal at the next meeting, and then we can debate that. Otherwise, we're just gonna talk in circles all day.
Sorry, I needed my charger, Erica?
Thanks. I could be wrong, but I always thought when you granted an entertainment license, that was in lieu kind of of the noise bylaw. We have the noise bylaw that's generally for the island, and when you grant a, an entertainment license, that gives exceptions to that location. So if the, if it says, all entertainment must end by twelve-thirty AM, which is what Ventuno says, and Queequeg says 1:00 AM, you've granted them that, that exemption? Or am I wrong? I mean, that's how we've always dealt with it in our office?
Erica, but I feel like we've had more discussion about the parameters for outdoor. Erica, but I feel like we've had more discussion about the parameters for outdoors where the noise carries more than more than indoors. Um. In our discussions, but I think that we do need to kind of re revisit this for some consistency, but also for consistency in what's waived. Because we do have a commercial core district. Where they should be able to provide entertainment when the establishment is open till one AM. Um, but it's, I think it's about the the noise carrying outside and what those parameters are. Um, Taylor.
Uh, I I mean, it seems like we're all pretty much in agreement of, you know, we can, we can figure out ways to monitor and to standardize. And this is kind of answering Brooke's question from a while ago. Um, that I I think no one, no one is fighting against the the idea that we. We figure out what those levels are and and those are the ones that we now have evidence of. And if it's an actual viable noise complaint, then we can kind of go from there and. Um, you know, if we're in violation, then we're in violation. Um, you know, I think we. I I keep on hearing that we're not asking businesses to close. At that time, but I I can tell you right now that if I'd had no music on my patio, starting at eleven o'clock, I also wouldn't have the unamplified. Human voices out there. Um, and and it's a significant, significant part of our business. You know, we had. Five weddings in the past month um that are coming to the island. They're spending money in the island. They're spending money with us. Um, they're they're spending money at those ends. Um. And it's just, you know, I I think it's it's. You know, by nature of these businesses that we all have put ourselves into, um, you know, I think obviously geography matters and um. My particular one is very different than what the Brotherhood says and I, you know, it's um, I I think again, standardizing what that level is makes sense. I think just again. Standardizing times isn't necessarily the the answer there for personally.
Thank you, Brooke.
So I think it would be helpful for us to to give some guidance to Amy because there's a lot of variables in what might be in a proposal that she would bring us. And so I I would um sort of. Maybe set some parameters around what a pol- a revision of the policy might look like. And I would, I would propose standardizing volume. And requiring the equipment that would limit the volume at everybody, at every location that has an entertainment license and the ability to to. Have that volume different for interior and exterior speakers. Um, because we do have different standards inside and outside. Um, so um. And and Amy, maybe you can work with the restaurant community to to sort of suss out whether whether that's possible technologically. Um, so I think everybody seems to be in agreement on that. And then in terms of um. Get some clarification around is an entertainment license. An exception to the noise by law to Erica's question to make sure we're clear on. The difference between the standard noise by law and what's allowed under an entertainment license. And then finally, maybe a little assessment of. Um. The existing license, a full list of the existing entertainment licenses and what their hours, their permitted hours for indoor and outdoor are. So that we can see and then maybe maybe put those on a map so we can visually see their pro- how proximate they are. To living locations or, you know. You know, there's a part of me that says you pick a hotel room downtown. You've picked a hotel room downtown, right? You didn't pick a hotel room, you know, away from town or, you know, so I'm trying to balance, right? The need, these businesses do need to operate. They should be able to operate. We license them to serve alcohol and to have patios and all of that. So striking the right balance and even ideally, and if I were doing this, like sit down with your closest neighbor and test the volume, right? Uh, in the rooms that are closest, whatever, really try to work on some collaboration here, but um, but I think in terms of. The hours, if there's two that are so close to each other, they should be the same, right? Because from an enforcement point of view, it's either twelve thirty or it's one. It's not, they're not different because then. The people who are doing the enforcement don't have to suss it out on at the time of a call, right? So how do we make them consistent by geography, business type? Sort of that kind of analysis, spreadsheet analysis, I think would really help us then be able to say. What exists, what 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 is ripe for change? And and then have a have a very published meeting where the interested parties. The restaurants can come and give us their input and feedback back as we have a more robust discussion. That's going to be my suggestion.
Um, I agree with everything that Brooke just said. I mean, I would say in terms of when we're thinking about it for consistency, there should be. Things that have to comply with ten PM and things where we grant it to one PM. I don't think that we should be twelve thirty, want like if you're serving liquor till one. And we're letting you have entertainment, it can go till one. Um, so that's just for for consistency in terms of feedback, Matt.
Yeah, I I think we've it, we we are, we've not waived it. We have caveats on different areas. You know, and and Amy talked about ten o'clock. It's supposed to be a certain, a certain level at ten o'clock. And we did that on purpose as a board over time, based on various public hearings and lots of input. And I think, uh. You know, and so if that is being, you know, if it isn't being followed, then that should be followed now. And uh, you know, for the ones that have that, and then that should be part of the discussion. I think we have to be careful. To, you know, to like, I don't think it's a waiver. It's never been a complete waiver. Oh, you get this so you can keep people everywhere up as late as you want. No, it's been, it's been, hey, you've got outdoor, but you're close to neighbors and you're close to an inn, you know, at ten, you've got to tweak it back a bit. Some of this is like kind of. Neighborliness and common sense, which is, you know, and I would hate to under, you know, I would hate to. Take that away. I would hate to like try to, you know, try to do something that takes all, takes away all the input we've had over the years. You know, so and what I, you know, I think Amy started to answer my question earlier by saying, yeah, there's been a lot, there's been issues past ten o'clock. So my thing is I I think we can deal with this in the fall, et cetera, but I think at, you know, ten or ten thirty, I would hope that both of these locations. Have toned it down so that we, you know, so so that we don't have any more calls. And then and then we can talk about how do we do it in the in the future. But I think that it, I think that's the issue that. We kind of are, I I feel like we're sort of talking around it. A bit, you know, I think I feel like everyone's talking around like at a certain time, we've, that's when the issues have been. So anyway.
Um, I mean, I think we're talking about whether there's no outdoor music after ten. Or the places where there is outdoor music after ten, the decibels should be limited. They should be allowed to continue to have that because of the nature of their business and their locations, but um. And then I think it should be consistent that it's if if it if it is allowed after ten, it can go till one. But that's my my take. So shall we just continue this discussion into the? When we're relicensing, Brooke?
And and I mean, we obviously have to address, this was brought to us as a viol- a series of um. Potential violations, but I would rather address it as a policy change for next season. Then as, because I think that that the lack of clarity around whether these are violations or not, you know. Uh, is is real and and the more we take judgment, tweak it down a bit is not a policy. It's a, it's a, it is not an enforceable policy and and so adding the technology will make this a lot more enforceable. A lot less judgment on the part of staff that may turn over. You know, multiple times, you know, a week uh at that hour and um I think it'll be easier for the licensees as well. So um, that's kind of where I'm leaning and I I would say that we we sort of um. Let this go for the moment in the service of of coming up with a policy that actually will avoid these kind of things coming before us in the future.
Thanks, Brooke. Amy?
Uh, I'll just say Brooke was in my head. Everything she said uh kind of outlines what we're thinking as well. We've already. Uh, teed up with the chamber and others to start getting work groups and really discuss it with various businesses and. How we move forward and have a set of rules. We don't have, we don't have entertainment regulations. Uh, we should. So that's what we will move forward with and we certainly wouldn't uh want to stop any of this. Um, it's just making sure. I think the measurement is at the source. And we have some tools. Chief Casper has been, has been great as to giving us some direction as to where those tools are. So it helps our officers as well. Um, when they go out and helps the establishment know when they've gotten over a certain decibel. So we think that's the path forward and appreciate the uh the feedback there.
Okay, so I think we're done with this item. And then we need to move on to the um, the Misoji noodle bar violation.
Thank you for your time.
Kim, Casey, Caroline, Taylor.
Look forward to.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Now, Amy, you want to introduce the next one? And everyone knows at noon I have to leave and Matt's going to take over.
Okay, do do we, is Folino or Brian on? Do we see that? I don't even see the.
No, I don't see any representation.
I noticed Folino and um Brian Swain to see if, okay, well.
When I'm cold and one of them comes on.
Yeah, yeah, I'll hold here and try to get in touch with them and you can go do your others.
Let's move on to. Um. The pub- public hearing for utility petitions. So the first one. Is twenty-two Pleasant Street? Continued, oh, it's with, it's been.
So, yeah, here, let me go through these for you. Um, so twenty-two Pleasant Street, just so everybody knows. Um, we have requested that Verizon submit a withdrawal for this matter because come to find out after. Way too many back and forths with Verizon and the engineers and the homeowner, um, the poll that was put in place. Um, prior to this even going to in. July is actually the correct location, but there's no plan showing that. Um, it it will still need to be moved back because right now it's right at the curb line. Um. But they're going to do a whole new petition for that. So in the meantime, there's all those polls there and it'll stay like that until. A new petition gets reviewed by you. So right now it's withdrawn.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action.
No.
Okay, so next up is fourteen Hussey Street.
Yep, so I just wanted to go over this with you real quick. So this was also heard back in July. Um. I will know a couple of things. We have been in touch um based on some comments from. The select board. Um, I I know that. Some or a lot of you had concerns that the pole was being relocated. Or requesting to be relocated and there was questions about, does this already have HTC approval? Why are they doing this? Um, and so we've been reaching out. I thought that the representative from Verizon was going to be here. Um, I have conveyed to them over and over again that we wanted the homeowners to be here as well. Um. I will note, if you can see this, this is the street view that's on the GIS currently. This was taken in November twenty nineteen. It shows that the. Um, fence went all the way out to the driveway curb cut and this is all landscaped. Um. And after the meeting with the select board, we did reach out to the HTC and come to find out that all of that work was done without any. Uh, permits to the HTC. They've been issued a violation notice. Um. Oops, let me reduce the size. You can see here that they've already done the work to expend, extend their driveway. Um, and I wanted to. Bring this to your attention as well. Since that hearing was held, um. The property across the street has gone before traffic safety and it'll end up coming to the select board, but. I'm not sure if you can see, this is the the subject property here at fourteen Hussey. This is number fifteen Hussey and there is an elderly person who has requested an accessible parking space right here at the end of the yellow line, kind of where this white box trunk is. Traffic Safety has recommended it. It still needs to get approval from the select board. Um, but. If this pole is moved back and they potentially request. That this parking space goes away, that's not going to work. Um, and also the. The fire chief has opined that if this pole gets moved back, depending on how far back it goes. Between this tree here and the pole now being up close to it, they wouldn't be able to get any fire apparatus through there. So. There's not really any appetite for this to move forward, but again, there's no. Representation, so you can either continue this again or you can close the hearing. Um. And make a recommendation potentially to not approve. Or prove whatever you feel like, but that's where that is.
Matt?
Yeah, uh, this is, uh. I I I'd say we clo- I make a motion to close the public hearing. Well, let me just, well, tell me my thoughts first. This is exactly, this is a parking yard. The first picture was bad, but it wasn't too bad. The second picture, the whole yard is now turned into for two or three cars. And then you look across the street and our policy is that you, on three streets downtown, you can bump one tire up. On three streets downtown. That was the last thing we voted about fifteen years ago. It has turned into full wide, bigger cars parking on the sidewalks. So this is, you know, this is a, you know, we say we have policies, we vote policies and we don't follow them and we end up with this. Mayhem. We don't have paid parking. We don't value parking. So now we've got people ripping yards up and turning them into parking yards all over the island. You know, that we look, and so anyway, I could go on for hours, but and so I I think that we should deny this uh and uh. And let them go through the HTC and see what happens there. Thank you.
Okay, and you did make a motion to close.
Make the motion to close.
All right, yeah, I'll suck at that motion. All right.
Okay, so that's been made and seconded, but I do, um, we'll discuss it. Um, Tom Dixon?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I I agree with most of Matt's comments uh in in directionally at at the very least. Um, I think when you purchase a seventeen ninety-five. Or thereabouts house, you accept certain um restrictions with it in historical district and. I believe that the homeowner has not gone around about this the right way. And I know we're considering telephone poll, not the HTC part of it. That's their purview. But I I do not see that this is in the public benefit to approve this, so I I would support denying this.
Okay, well, um, Brooke, on the motion to close.
Uh. Yeah, I I think we should close the public hearing and let the HTC do its process and um. My thought on this is I do not like rewarding property owners who move ahead with things and then ask for permission later. It, I just, I think it's a bad. Precedent to set and particularly if if uh there's a public, a fire safety issue here, um, but let them reapply and we'll we'll consider it. Um, when they come back to us, should they have permission from the HTC?
Okay, um, on the motion to close by Roll Call, Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Faye.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye, or Don Hill, aye. Um, and then is there a motion to deny the application?
So move, Madam Chair.
For a second. All those in favor by Roll Call, Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Faye.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye, the carries unanimously. Uh, next up. Sorry, I have to go back and forth to the agenda here. Um, we have seven North Gully Road.
So we have Tim Leifert on from National Grid to review these, um, the the rest of the petitions that are being. Put before you. They are all for new service. So it's not poles being moved or anything like that. So Tim, do you want to go ahead and do Bank Street in North Gully? Tim?
Tim, can you hear us?
I can, yes. Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Excellent. Good morning, uh, Tim Leifert, National Grid Electric, one hundred East Ashland Street, Brockton, Massachusetts. For this first petition, uh, National Grid is petitioning to install.
For this first petition, uh National Grid is petitioning to install approximately sixty feet. Of two three-inch conduits. And two new handholds, and this is for new service to number seven North Gully Road.
Are there any questions from the board?
Um before you make a motion to close the hearing, you do have a butter letter in your packet. Um from Diane Downing, she is also on as an attendee. Um there was issues with um water runoff. And that has finally been corrected and she just wants to make sure that if this is approved, well, actually, she's got her hand raised. Why don't I let her speak?
Diane, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I did. I just want to make sure that if I needed to speak to you, I could. So that's okay. I'm good. I'd love to listen to your response to my letter. Thank you.
Um Erica, did, does it seem to be resolved?
Well, it's it there's, it hasn't happened yet, so my understanding is that when the work is done. To do the conduit and put the new line in, that the road is repaired. To the same condition that it's in now and that there's no change, so um so that there's no water runoff and anything like that.
Okay, so we'll just make sure that that's that it's conditioned upon that.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, there's a hand up.
Okay, I just, I thank you for being so, I just want to say thank you for being so expedient on this and I just want to. State that it was a huge issue for me back when there was a patio put in at the top of North Gully Road and they kind of destroyed the Gully Road. After the fact, the town went to great lengths to pave it and put that curbing in and it's been a godsend, that's all. And I would hate to go through all of that again, but thank you again for being.
Thank, thank you for that, Diane.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye. Um okay, on the um the motion was made and seconded to close the public hearing by roll call, Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Matt Faye.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye, um and then on the.
Make a motion to approve with those uh comments regarding uh the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Faye.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye, that carries unanimously. Um. St. Holbert Ave.
Yes.
There's a few comments.
Tim, you want to go ahead on this one?
Here can.
For ten and eleven Holbert.
So for this next petition, um National Grid is petitioning to install approximately twenty feet. Of two four-inch conduits and one new handhole. And this is for new service to number ten Holbert.
Hey, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Are there any questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Faye.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye, that carries unanimously. Um. And then on the.
Motion.
Move approval with uh all related comments from staff.
Second.
Thank you. Um by roll call, Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Faye.
Aye.
Don Hill, aye, that carries unanimously, and I am going to sign off now, if not could take over.
Oh, I thought you were gonna get the next three or four done, Don. You're moving fast.
Yeah, I gotta go. My ride's here.
Alright, so we've got seventy-five Paco Mo Road.
Do we just officially open the hearing, Matt?
Yep, and we're opening the hearing, yes.
Go ahead, Tim.
So for this next petition, we are petitioning to install approximately sixty feet. Of two three-inch conduits from existing multi-tap. Onto the property of seventy-five Paco Mo and this is for new service to number seventy-five Paco Mo.
Alright, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this?
Can I ask a question? What is a multi-tap?
It's an above-ground junction box that allows us to tap high voltage cables.
So does that mean that this is like three-phase?
Um no, I believe this location is a single-phase junction box. And it's gonna feed, um I believe it's gonna feed a new transformer that's going on the property of seventy-five.
Thanks.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions?
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so to close it, Brooke.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Malcolm.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we're closed. Do we have a motion?
Move approval with all staff comments.
Second.
Alright, okay, all those in favor, Brooke.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Malcolm.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's approved. Okay, number six, uh Sherbin Turnpike to one Kimball Ave. I don't, opening the public hearing.
Go ahead, Tim.
For this next petition, uh National Grid is petitioning to install approximately. Three hundred and twenty feet of two four-inch conduits. And one new above-ground. Junction box, uh the same type of above-ground junction enclosure as the uh the last petition.
Alright, uh Erica?
I will note that we received, um they didn't make it in the packet because I think they were just verbal, but I think Tim. Um Attorney Sarah Alger had reached out to you about making sure. That when this work is done in the shoulder, that it's restored to previous condition.
That's correct, yep.
Alright.
I move to close the public hea- oh, sorry.
That's alright, do we have a second to close it?
Second.
Alright, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Malcolm.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's closed.
I'll move approval with um um. The condition as outlined by Attorney Alger. And staff.
Okay. Okay, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Malcolm.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's approved. Okay, twenty-four Tacoma Way, I'm opening, oh, sorry, opening the public hearing.
Um before Tim starts on this, there is. So when I was reviewing these last week, um. I had a question about road ownership and if this should even be heard by the select board because Tacoma Way. Is public only for a portion of the road. It goes, it's public from Fairgrounds Road to just past. Um Amelia Drive, so this section is actually private. Um so I did reach out to town council and the email exchange is in your. Uh packet, but he said you can, you can hold the hearing, but you can't really, you can't vote to deny it essentially because it is private property, but. Just to be public, I'll have Tim review it still. I know that there was one a butter who um. Questioned the location of the new transformer in front of twenty-four Tacoma Way.
Okay, so we're opening a public hearing. Is there anyone want to comment on it? Any, any board questions, Brooke?
Yeah, so Erica, can you be clearer in terms of the concern about the location was, were there details expressed by this person?
Um I think they just were hoping that this multi-tap box could go over here in front of the development. Property instead of over here kind of, and I know this isn't to scale right in front of her driveway. So again, though, this section of the road is private. Um Tim, I I because Jose Vasquez had um drawn the plan. I had given her Jose's number, so I don't know if they had a discussion.
I believe they did, yes, um. I didn't get details on what came out of that discussion. I believe there were, there were still more discussions to be had and I believe. Jose has intentions of meeting the resident out there as well.
Okay.
And in the event that there are private easements that that we need to get instead of. Getting a petition approved, I think he's prepared to go that route as well.
Okay.
Malcolm? Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with. Well, we're told we can't deny it, but just I think it's important that if someone has concern that the best uh. That's tried to be resolved and it seems like you are. Yeah, that's a good comment. Alright, Brooke?
Yeah, I I would agree and I think while we may not have um legal authority over issuing this permission. I would encourage National Grid to to also encourage National Grid to try to accommodate um the neighbors. To the best of your ability and so I would, I would. I would plan to include that in a motion even though it's not legal. It may not be legally enforceable as a, as a, as a request from the select board. So.
Right. Alright, so those could, that could probably just be reflected in the minutes and, you know, sort of, and we've said it here, so they've heard.
Okay.
Alright, so should we move on, should we move on to Tom Nevers Road?
We close the public hearing.
At least, let's at least close the public hearing.
Close it, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, alright, Tom.
Your recommendation, uh if, would see what Erica thinks, or yourself and Erica think. Um if we close the public hearing and motion a table, perhaps then.
Or how about take no action?
Yeah.
Because tabling feels like it will might come back, but I would say, close the public hearing, do a motion on that. And then take no action due to the fact that this section of the road is private.
But, but, but as the.
I'd encourage National Grid to work with the butter.
Yeah, and the comments will be in the minutes and, yes, that sounds good to me.
Okay, so do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
So moved.
Alright, and um Malcolm?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Do we have a motion to?
Motion.
Table.
Motion to take no action on this item.
Alright, do you have a second?
Yes.
Alright, Tom?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, great. We are uh opening one oh nine Tom Nevers Road.
So for this next petition, uh we are petitioning to install approximately one hundred and fifty feet of two four-inch conduits. And one new handhole, and this is for new service to number one oh nine Tom Nevers.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone like with questions like to speak on this? Alright, any concerns from the board?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Alright, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye.
Motion to approve with departmental comments.
Second.
Alright, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And I vote aye, great. We are now on, where are we, Willard Street and Helbert Ave.
Open the public hearing.
Opening the public hearing on Willem Street, Willard Street and Helbert Ave.
Go ahead, Tim.
So for this last petition, we are petitioning to install approximately one thousand thirty feet of conduits. Four new handholds. Two transformers and one new above-ground junction enclosure. This work will also include the removal of seven poles. And approximately eleven hundred feet of overhead wires. And this did come in as a a customer request originally.
Okay, and and is there anyone here to speak on this? We're, it's, we've got a public hearing. Alright, sitting none?
Matt?
Yes.
You must be thrilled.
I think it's great.
Yeah. So I would move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Alright, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, alright, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Alright, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and it is great to see poles coming down. It would be great to see more of this. And I, yeah, thank you. Alright, so we are.
Anything on, um. Misoji?
Nope, I have not gotten a response on that, so would we continue?
We'd have to continue, well, actually, it's not a public hearing.
Right.
Um so the board can move forward and make a determination on the, um.
Erica, can you take the screenshot down, please?
Oh, sure, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um so the board can either continue the hearing to a future, you know, to whenever it can be rescheduled or they can take some action.
I would, if if I can just comment real quick on this, it's twofold, um and I I know body cam footage was was shown. It's both. Um for our sidewalk dining, which I issued a cease and desist on because. As a body cam footage showed, they were using outdoor dining well past ten PM with alcohol. And having not signed the agreement or paid for the permit, so I I believe that should should stand. Um and then there was other violations as far as alcohol leaving the premises and that. Um would be a liquor license violation, so I prefer to to do that with the person. And any suspension would be administered on next season on the same date generally that we have it, so we can certainly continue it. Um I believe steps have been taken to correct the problems, so I don't feel an immediate need. Um but I would continue with the cease and desist on the sidewalk dining because it was, it was violated and used without. A proper permit being issued and they acknowledged that, so that's all I would say on that for now. I think it can be continued.
Yeah, Brooke?
Yeah, um Amy, can you give me a sense, they they were noticed about this meeting, right? And did they, did they confirm receipt of that notice?
I don't believe I have confirmation. I also confirmed with uh an attorney that had been working with them. Um so. Uh I, you know, I don't. Yeah.
If I might, but it was to the same.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Mode of communication that you've been using all along, okay?
Correct, and I had met with him too as well prior to this, so we met in person.
Yeah, so I'd like to give the benefit of the doubt about why they're not here, but I also think that the sidewalk dining piece is clear cut, right? They did not complete the process for licensing and used it anyway, so I would move that we revoke uh or um. Uh what what's the motion you need, Amy? Just confirm your cease and desist?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it was, yep, it was um legally uh rendered, so I think we're good there, so. Yes.
I would make the motion that we reaffirm the cease and desist order on outdoor dining for Misoji noodle.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Okay, I seeing none, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we are reaffirming that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, and then Brooke?
And then on the, on the other violations, um. It worries me a little that someone who's been issued a violation notice was, did not come to this. It it, I mean, it doesn't. I'll be honest, leave a great taste in my mouth, but I will try to give the benefit of the doubt and I do think we should give them one more shot. With um Amy, if, just let them know that, you know, we want to hear from them, but if not, we will make a decision. Next time.
Thank you.
It's in my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Tom, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that's prudent. Um in the memo from Attorney Riley, um it says that the witnesses have to be kind of sworn in and and all that. I don't know if that's exactly the right term, but sworn in and and to kind of give testimony, so I think. Brooke's notion on giving them the benefit of the doubt to come and actually um. It provide comments, defend themselves, et cetera, it it is a, is the right. It, it, it is a, is the right course. And also, Amy, the, can you confirm that the ABCC is aware? And will be made aware of our continuance and all that, because I'm sure there's some, um, yeah.
Correct, they, um, the ABCC comes in, uh, if any action is taken, I either report it in the annual report or if a suspension is made. Um, they're noticed and the licensee has five days to appeal that to the ABCC. So that's how that goes. The sidewalk dining part is as property owners, you could certainly uh, cease and desist on that. But when there's liquor license violations itself, the removal of alcohol from the premises, that's a liquor license violation. And that part would go um, under those conditions, yes. So we're good.
All right, so do we have to continue this to another date or do we just rela- re? If we talk.
It wasn't an advertised public hearing, but your next meeting day is October twentieth. It's actually the third Monday because of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the thirteenth, so you can. Just table this until, you could motion to table until the twentieth.
Right.
Okay.
So moved.
Who's second that?
Second.
All right, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm? And I.
I guess.
Yep, and I vote aye to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, do I have a motion to, that's the end of it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Brooke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Bye. Bye, guys, thanks.
Thanks, all.